Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay.
All set?
All right. My name is John Bennett. I'm with the Wyndham Regional Commission. And our purpose here this evening is to hold a couple of hearings, public hearings regarding Grafton's Town Plan Review and Approval thereof, and also to conduct municipal consultation. That's the first festive event. And the second one will be a public hearing on the determination of energy compliance for the enhanced energy element and the town plan as a whole. So I'll be serving as a hearing officer. And I note that the hearing opened at 5:32 at the Grafton Town Garage, providing an informal synopsis of our town plan approval process. Towns adopt plans, and they may request Regional Commission approval if they so desire. If they do request that approval, we have statutory guidelines we have to follow and a timeline we have to meet. So our process for reviewing the town plan is that staff reviews the plan for the presence of all the required elements specified in statute. There are 12 required elements for a town plan. And we look at whether the plan is consistent with the state's planning goals. Consistent means that within a reasonable amount of time, if you pursue the town plan, you will be tending towards meeting those state's planning goals. After staff reviews the plan, then we have a planning coordination committee that reviews the plan, and they provide the more, if you will, qualitative assessment of the plan. Does it seem to articulate the town's view, desired future? And they offer comments for improving the plan in future updates. We conduct a hearing, which is what's going on this evening. We generate findings and recommendations for action by the full commission, and then eventually, the full commission votes whether to approve or not. So that's a very brief summary of the process. I will proceed to read the hearing notice. My apologies, but the Wyndham Regional Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 10, 2020, at 5:30 PM at the Grafton Town Garage, 220 Bell Road, Grafton, Vermont, to consider the request of the town of Grafton for approval of its town plan as provided for by 24 VSA Section 4350B. The WRC will consider whether the town plan is consistent with the Vermont planning goals, compatible with the Wyndham Regional Plan, compatible with the approved plans of other towns in the region, and contains all the elements provided by the Vermont Planning and Development Act. The public hearing will also be held to consult with the town of Grafton and consider the confirmation of the town's planning process as provided for by 24 VSA 4350A. The WRC will hear all comments relevant to its review of the town's plan and planning process at the public hearing. At this point, we'd like to invite a representative of the town to present the plan, their requests for approval, and to generally outline the process by which they develop the new plan.
Says he stares at me.
Take it away, David.
I got an email at 3 o'clock that said I was gonna say something today. I did not plan much.
Oh, it's 3 o'clock.
I wasn't open today, at least, when I'm home today. So what I've got is some extemporaneous notes talking from my perspective on this. I came onto this board four years ago as a member. The plan was under review and well underway, except for the Energy Chapter, which was in stagnation because of a lot of things going on. Since then, we met at least once a month with duly worn meetings and minutes and so forth, with the vast majority of every meeting discussing the plan. One of the things in your emails that talked about where we got our information and how we got advice and so forth, and so I guess the things that I think about is a combination of folks like Eric and others that have been on the committee for a very long time, and their help, Chuck, and his help, you know, who on the record is giving a huge guidance in helping, but then a combination of multiple workshops, conferences, and other opportunities that Wyndham Regional and other organizations put forward. And so, you know, it's not a concrete linear process. It is like making sausage. You know, two-thirds of the way through making the sausage, we thought we had a good mix, and something acts up, 171 comes up, and you gotta weave that into virtually every single chapter, continually making sure that there is some kind of flow to the message and doesn't get all convoluted. We met bimonthly in 2018 for not a full half of the year, but multiple months, with the goal that we're near the finish line, and we gotta end this. You know, we had the content in the general gist of it together, and I guess when I say general gist, I will speak my perspective. I described it often as like threading the needle, trying to find the balance between individual property rights and the good of community. And they don't always match up well, and we did the best we can. Sometimes the good of the community is something as simple as, you know, an opinion about environmental issues and others are things like, if you don't write the plan this way, then you're not eligible for municipal planning grants, or special standing, or so forth. So that threading of the needle without giving up as many property rights as possible was challenging, to say the least. We then held a public hearing, the Planning Commission did, in January 2019. We voted unanimously to approve it, to move it on to the Select Board, which we did in early February of 2019. They had it, went through a variety of steps. Now is a Select Board that's a member, that's been here through the entire process, and please feel free to add what you want, but basically, there was a lot of discussion, a variety of changes went through and then removed, and the final document had some changes from ours. My perspective, none of the changes were substantive, and none of them had a negative impact on the document. Some of it were just clean up some verbiage and some other things like that. During all of this, we also voted as a town during that time to switch from the Select Board approving the plan to going to an Australian ballot and having the entire town approve it. So the Select Board then, Al, I'm looking at you, approved the plan in December of 2019, and then it was voted and adopted, I think is the right terminology, by the town in January of 2020. And that's kind of where we stand now. That's, I can go on? That's an overview?
That's a very articulate synopsis of the process he went through.
I don't run the meeting. I don't think I want to add anything.
I will say that the Planning Commission is to be commended for its Herculean labors to thread the needle and try to balance the diverse interests that were brought to the So with that, I would invite public comment on the approvability of the plan, if anyone cares to speak about whether Wyndham Regional Commission should approve the plan or not.
I think it's a good plan. I think, I've watched them start this plan, and a number of years ago, they worked very hard, made a lot of tough decisions. I think they were good decisions, and I think it's a good plan. It's a pretty good compromise. I think most people are happy with it. As we all know, we can't make everybody happy, but I think it's, they've done a really good job. And it was frustrating for them, and a lot of time out of their lives, and a lot of grief. So I think it's a good plan.
I can agree with that, too, as a resident of Grafton and also a Select Board member.
Hey, are we still on?
A lot of compromises were made, given past history of some divisions in the town, but everybody came together, and I think the Planning Commission has done an awesome job. I'd like to see it move ahead and be approved.
Is this the appropriate place to bring up an issue if I thought there was something in the plan that was perhaps not legal? Or does that need to go later in the process? Well, I'm here to entertain public comment. Sounds like appropriate time to me.
I have an issue with one of the maps.
Want me to read that again?
I have an issue with one of the maps, and on the map, we have four properties in the town of Grafton that are state lands, three state forests, and one wildlife management They're classified as critical resource, no development, annual. Vermont is a Dillon State, which means towns only have the authority that is given to them by the state of Vermont. And having been a state forestry employee, I find it hard to believe the state of Vermont would give authority to the town to write a statement or make a map that takes away the authority of the state forest to develop or to do things in the state forest or the wildlife management area. So my question is, really, can a town take jurisdiction when we are a Dillon State?
Bear with me while I finish writing this down. Bear with me while I finish writing this down. I see what's going on. I lost your precise phraseology right at the end, Al.
The fact that Vermont is a Dillon State.
I got that part, but...
How is it possible that a town could impose restrictions like this on state property?
So the short answer is that I'm not an attorney, so if you want a legal opinion on that, I might recommend you talk with Robin Stern about it, or county counsel, I believe that is Robin.
Well, that has been, we just changed attorneys. She's retiring.
Who's your new attorney?
Stacey.
Okay. Larry?
Yes.
The second thing I would say, so first, I'd say, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not gonna try to pass muster on, pass judgment on that, but I will say, as a second thought, that town plan is not a regulation per se. I will also point out that there are places where that question, I think, is being addressed not far from here, Lower Lake.
Oh, I know. That's why I bring it up.
And I don't know how that's playing out.
Well, I guess my question is even more basic than just our plan. It really goes about your process. And you, Wyndham Regional reviews a town plan for conformance that we hit the 12, the targets that are established, but it doesn't necessarily, because you've written them and you've talked to those items, you're not necessarily saying that that complies with state law, or are you?
We are saying, if we approve the plan, we are saying that we find that it contains the required elements specified in statute, and that it appears consistent with the state's planning goals. And that's what we're saying.
Correct, but I think the question that I have is bigger than just Grafton. And if nobody knows the answer, they ought to find out the answer, because you're in the business of approving plans, it seems like that Dillon State issue should be resolved because regional plans ought to tell people, hey, this shouldn't be in your plan, you don't have authority to do that. And if somebody needs to find out what legally they can do and can't do.
Do or not.
The other comment I'd like to make, you just told us how town plans are kind of advisory, and they're not law, but we've just gone through a discussion with Stephanie Giles and got a ruling, a project review sheet on some work we wanted to do in the village park. And the question was raised, well, does it need an Act 250 permit? At the very end of the project review sheet...
That was Stephanie, that was John Fay.
Well, I'm getting to that. I'm getting to that. So you've seen, you've seen his last comment, okay. But in the end, he says, well, you have to comply with the town plan. So in that case, Act 250 didn't take jurisdiction, but had Act 250 taken jurisdiction, then the town plan does kind of become law, because they're looking to see if you follow the town plan.
Be conforming to the town plan. And this question can be debated for quite a while, but in the Act 250 definition of development, there is that exemption for projects for municipal and state purposes that involve less than 10 acres of development activity on the land. So Act 250 doesn't apply to the proposed, as I've seen it articulated, wouldn't apply to the village park, gazebo, and parking lot, and trails.
I understand that, but my point was, although the plan is not a legal restriction, when you couple it with Act 250, and Act 250 starts to decide what can and can't be done, it seems to me the town plan then does kind of take on a legal, it's the guidelines that Act 250 is going to enforce. On its own, no, but coupled with Act 250, yes.
I think we could spend quite a while getting into the weeds of the case law on Act 250 and the specificity and applicability of language in the town plan. Case law has tended, over the last 10 or 15 years, to get increasingly tight on just how specific language must be, and including what it's saying, you can and can't do, and where, and so on and so forth. So I don't think we're gonna resolve that question this evening.
I didn't expect that you would, but I wanted to make sure it was duly noted.
It is, duly noted.
And before this process is over, I would like to have an answer on the Dillon State question. The Dillon State and the ability...
I'll call a response as well. Again, we are not attorneys, so you're likely to need to try to request an opinion from an attorney to resolve that. Secondly, we have a statutory timeframe within which we have to act. We have to render a decision within two months of the town making its request. So your desire to have an answer before this process, if you're referring to our approval process, I would be surprised if you were able to come up with an answer before the end of the month. But I'm not gonna discourage you from trying.
Well, it's gonna affect every town plan from now on that has state land in that town, not just us, but other towns.
Not necessarily.
Okay. Another second.
I would offer one final observation, that many towns don't specifically call out state lands in their plan. And my understanding is that your Planning Commission is working, going to continue to work on updating the plan, and they may well be addressing that issue so it becomes less of...
The sticking point.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment?
John, I have a follow-up to Al's question, please. So whereas it's clear the town plan in and of itself is not statute, it's not even a regulation, but it does have a stipulation that when there is a hearing about development in any particular property, that the town plan will be taken into consideration as an article of that consideration. And you just mentioned the case law, and that's not what I'm asking about. I'm not asking you to get into any of that. But I am asking a question about the perception of risk, because to my mind, where some of our citizens are concerned about what's contained in the town plan, is a concern that if they attempt to develop their land, and in the town plan, the map may say, define their property in a particular way, that if their development is construed not to be consistent with that, they are running a risk of not getting approval. Does that make sense, what I've just said? I'm asking about the risk element, if your particular development is not consistent with the town plan map.
Among the questions that your question raises would be, what are the stipulations in the town plan? What is the project? The primary time when the town plan would be considered is if the project requires an Act 250 permit. So there are a significant number of imponderable hypotheticals there, so I don't think I can give you a cut-and-dry answer.
Okay.
I can point out the considerable hypothetical imponderables, but I don't, I think that...
I have two statements, and I want you to clarify as accurate or inaccurate, to make sure everybody's on the same page. Number one, having a town plan does not trigger an Act 250. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of misinformation about that. Oh, now that you've approved this town plan, we're gonna have to do an Act 250. Having the town plan simply gives you the town standing versus just the region has standing if we do not have a town plan, because it says, if I read the law right, the Regional Commission has standing unless, and I don't wanna get into the weeds of it.
Welcome to the weeds.
But the other half that I wanna follow up with is, whether you approve this plan or not, the Act 250 piece is already done. Their approval has nothing to do with the Act 250 piece anymore. They can reject it or approve it, doesn't change where we stand in relation to our plan and Act 250. Is that accurate or not?
The last statement is unequivocally accurate, that the town adopts a plan, that plan has standing in Act 250.
This process is to make us eligible for municipal planning grants and some other things beyond. So just for clarity, as we have these discussions, because the weeds are deep.
They are deep. And just because I can't resist, your first statement about standing in Act 250, if the town has standing to participate in Act 250.
And 248.
The Select Board and the Planning Commission are statutory parties, if you will, in Act 250. If you adopt a plan, then that plan has standing in Act 250.
Okay, and there's a difference between what I said and that.
So, sorry about the journey into the shrubbery, but...
That's an important differentiation.
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
Wow. All right. Any more public comments? So it is now 6 o'clock, and I guess I would like to beg the audience's opinion or permission. We have another half of the agenda for this hearing yet to go. The next hearing on the determination of the energy plan, energy compliance, has only one element. I would like to beg your indulgence to spend 10 minutes or more trying to complete the agenda for this first hearing, and we can then commence the second one. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you. So what I wanna do, as is likely to be a familiar refrain to some, I come bearing gifts. So I have 10 copies yourself of the agenda for the second part of this. Thank you very much.
The second part of the first half of it.
Yeah, the second part of the first hearing. I have multiple other documents that are going to pertain to this part of the discussion as well, some more, some less. I have another handout, and I'll ask somebody else to pick up and distribute that. The first item is the consultation agenda, and the second item I handed out is actually the, what did I do with my coffee? Your head commercial camera. Thank you. So taking a quick look at the agenda, sort of three major items, local planning needs, plan implementation, and how can we help. So plan recommendations from the last review, what I just handed around, was actually our findings, recommendations, and comments on the 2014 adopted plan that was really, I think the header on it said edited, 2008 plan edited for readoption. So there are comments there that were, if you will, germane to... So, there are comments there that were, if you will, germane to the plan at that point in time. And the first agenda item is to review any new elements and recommendations for the plan. Well, in the prior recommendation, we did talk about trying to perhaps address prospective needs for transportation, and trying for greater clarity amongst goals, policies, and actions. And those are a couple of thoughts that I think you have grappled with, and we would encourage you to continue grappling with as you go forward. I think you addressed the issue about prospective needs for transportation in the transportation section of the new plan. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Then the next part of this agenda item is, how well is the plan working? Well, this plan hasn't been enforced very long. It seems like, it seems like a pretty good plan from our perspective, and I don't know that I've heard much from you all about how well it's working thus far. And I certainly don't want to return to the issues that we've already discussed at some length. Are there any other thoughts about how well the plan's working? In other words, for example, I believe you have adequate language in there to satisfy DHCD's requirements for applying for village center designation. So, that would seem as though the plan's working well on that front. I don't know if there are any other thoughts, but if any, and I don't want to put you on the spot, don't want to manufacture input. If there is any, I'm happy to hear it, and if not, I'm happy to advance down the agenda in timely fashion, trying to make good on my threat to wrap this up in five or 10 minutes.
I want you to approve the plan, but I will make a comment that I feel that the goals, policies, and recommendations at the end of every chapter is not feasible, doable, or realistic. I counted up, there's like 400 different goals by the time you add them all up, and any rewrite that needs to be condensed and made workable, so the Select Board reads it, and they have a clear, realistic set of potential goals, rather than just a pie-in-the-sky list that meets honestly each of the little checkmarks that we try to meet as we go through the plan. And that's, I mean, that needs work. I'd say so.
If I were to paraphrase, you need clear, realistic, and feasibly achievable...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, yes. I guess I would say that's coming from Citizen Dave, not Sheriff Dave.
All right.
Different hats for different...
Citizen Dave. Okay, got it. Without further ado, we can advance to item one B, training needs of the municipality. And B1, are there topics about which you'd like more information in training? I mean, Dave's already got something up his sleeve in terms of land use. We, WRC, put on every year a training session on essentials of land use planning and regulation, and we can make available to you all the PowerPoint slides from that, and we've been known to come to meetings and sit down and go over that with the planning commissions. I want to be a little careful about committing to too many meetings, but we've been known to do that as well. But there will be a training session coming up sometime later this spring, if spring's here. So, sometime between now and June, we'll be offering another training session, so we'll push out information to you all. Any other thoughts that have come to mind?
I will personally again speak up and say, as a member of this group, I have, it has worked well for me that the Wyndham Regional has put on a lot of little meetings, like in Townsend, which are convenient. You know, they're not a full novel, they're a little short story, but it's enough for me to chew on and go home and think about, and kind of making the sausage. I don't even know the right questions of what I don't know, so they were very helpful, along with the occasional big ones where we travel to Rutland or Montpelier and, you know, spend a full day. Those combinations, please continue that kind of model, for me at least. I don't know what I don't know, so keep feeding it, I'll figure it out myself later.
Okay. And I think that kind of answers B2, what format works best? Some small, local, and in addition to the larger ones?
I look at Eric, but Eric, these guys, these guys work seven nights a week in other committees as well, so...
I was going to say. Okay, plan implementation, local permitting. Well, we can more or less take this one relatively quickly. The question asked about are the bylaws up to date? This is a generic agenda aimed at all towns with which we can solve. And clearly, you folks don't have general zoning bylaws, you do have flood hazard area regulations, and those may or may not be worth taking a look at updating.
Sir?
Subdivision regulations as well.
Any of you, and I want to make sure you guys know this perception, I think Chuck told me once, that both of those need some minor tweaking because of law changes, but nothing radical? Is that inaccurate, or you can't, you don't think that's accurate?
I do know that Bill Hearn has updated both of those to change language only, because what was on record did not reflect that we have a DRB.
Oh, he's updated since then?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
Something he's done within the last few days.
And no ability probably aligning the current statutes, little things, you think?
I suspect so.
Excellent. Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
Well, it's just, it's hot off, or may not even be off the glass yet.
I was going to say, I hadn't seen it there. But now I have a conversational gambit to undertake with Bill. So, Al, you mentioned DRB. I didn't realize that you had or were doing that.
Chair's right here.
Eight months ago, probably now? Last year, sometime?
Yeah, it's been over a year.
Over a year?
Yeah.
Meredith is also on the DRB, you know, every other year.
All right. So, non-regulatory implementation priorities, discuss some municipalities' priorities related to the plan. So, an example might be, you know, enhancing the village park. Are there other things that you think are priorities for advancing?
We have in the plan, on a couple of different occasions, town or municipal purchase of property rights, if you will, to further objectives of, be it flood resilience or habitat corridors. As far as I know, none of these have been acted upon, but they're there to act as inspiration to our slip work. And if we can do this on the plan, it removes the usurpation of private property rights, and gives you a payback, if you will, for...
Let us know if you're interested. We might be able to facilitate communications with Vermont River Conservancy or the Land Trust and all that down in Athens, in the corner of Rockingham Grafton, there was significant purchase of development rights in the flip lane down there. Yep, we'd be happy to help, to advance the cause. Okay. Going way too long. So, the last two bits, overview of WRC programs and projects where we may be of assistance. So I have two things to hand out, these are both available on our website, but I brought a few copies, so thank you very kindly for distributing those. I think most of you are aware that we have a variety of programs from our emergency management, hazard mitigation work, with which Eric is quite familiar. We do transportation planning, obviously, energy planning, natural resources planning. We have a program that does municipal planning assistance, and goodness knows, we have other things going on, like the broadband initiative project that we're trying to advance. So, then comes the most self-serving question on the entire agenda, which is, where has the WRC been most valuable in town? And I'd be happy to hear what folks thought.
I guess nobody else will. I've said it before, I'll say it again, Wyndham Regional, in my opinion, has been incredibly responsive and incredibly non-biased in the advice and information they've shared with me. When I have a question, I've been very impressed at the neutrality that your organization has tried to take, and throwing it back in my face most times, saying, it's your town, you guys have to answer those questions. But again, the completeness and the openness would be the absolute answer to that.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right. So, the final item on these docket is confirmation, and the benefits and requirements, the benefits of confirmation, so planning process confirmation is the second part of this equation, you approve your plan, and then approve, confirm your planning process if you are engaged in a continuing planning process that within a reasonable time will result in a plan that's consistent with the goals in Section 4302 of the Act. And number two, you're engaged in a process to implement the municipal plan, consistent with a program for implementation. And three, maintaining efforts to provide local funds for municipal and regional planning purposes. So, if we find that, then you have significant benefits in statute, your plan will not be subject to review by the Commissioner of Housing and Community Development under Section 4351. That's a good thing. State agency plans adopted under 3VSA Chapter 57 shall be compatible with the municipality's approved plan. And the municipality may levy impact fees on new development within its borders. That's not so much of a carrot for you folks, because you need to have zoning and capital budget to do that. But number four, the municipality shall be eligible to receive additional funds from the Municipal and Regional Planning Fund. That means municipal planning, which we were able to secure, for example, to hire Fitzgerald Environmental to review the Saxon's River post Irene. There's something that's not specified in statute, but is a benefit that accrues to the town of having a confirmed planning process, which involves having an approved plan, which is that it is a requirement of Department of Housing and Community Development that you have a confirmed planning process to be eligible to apply for village center designation. So, that concludes...
Part one.
Part one. Any further comment before I declare that hearing closed? That's...
Yes, Al, just a kind of a question. In the plan, there's a place where it asks, how does your plan compare with or align with the neighboring town's plans? How do you decide who sets the tone? The first one that writes the plan? Because it's like, somebody has to go first, and then in order for the second person...
I don't know.
How does the second person...
I don't know when that process actually started, 25, 30 years ago. The statute says that your plan should be compatible with the approved plans of other towns in the region. Without going too deep into the statutory weeds, there's a definition of compatible in the statute, and I can perhaps dredge it up quickly. Where in, wrong pile, not paper, wherein it is written that... Compatibility, as used in this chapter, for one plan to be compatible with another, the plan in question, as implemented, will not significantly reduce the desired effect of the implementation of the other plan.
So, there's a big advantage over the first?
There was back when.
Right.
But we, when we're doing our review, we take a look at the proposed land use maps from all the adjoining towns, and take a look at your proposed land use map. And it's somewhat remarkable how compatible most of our towns' plans really are, that you have your resource lands along the borders with Wyndham and Chester, and in Wyndham, most of that's called forest, and in Chester, that's called forest slash recreational, and in Rockingham, where they join, it's called conservation in Rockingham. So, that isn't often a tremendous stumbling block, just because towns generally have similar perspectives on what they're hoping to see in similar places. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it does, but I find it interesting when they compare their current plan to the one that it is now replacing, that I would say 2008 version. When you look at the land use maps in 2008, and then you look at what now is presented, there's a fair change, and could change in a different direction.
There's a change in the names of things. If you actually look... I did not bring the 2008 or the 2014 plan with me, but I'm somewhat familiar with them. And I would say that while there's a difference in appearance in a lot of places, I don't know that it's that substantial a change in what the towns articulating its desires for those areas to be.
Yeah, it is, because...
Yeah, it is, because the agricultural land is the only thing in the two thousand and eight that is different. And then the land use all around, the agricultural land is the same, east side of town, west side of town. And now we just, we have two different colors on the map.
So, I'm not sure what your point is about.
Well, it's just, that was in compliance, now we've changed and something else. It's like, just seems we've changed our land use classifications from two thousand and eight to the current plan. But I guess that doesn't matter.
I know we've tried to incorporate the Act one seventy-one overlays that we had in a previous iteration on this map, so I don't know if that counters some of the difference in classification. Yeah.
Any other? All right. I guess I will declare that hearing closed at six twenty-four.
In your note review, you started with...
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Lots less paper this go-around. And I don't think we have any new attendees here just for the energy part. I think everyone signed in. I'm not missing anyone. So, welcome. Thank you for coming to this public hearing. This one is for determination of energy compliance. And much to everyone's surprise, I will be serving as the hearing officer for this hearing as well. So, I will turn the page and start a stack of notes, energy. So, opening the hearing a little tardy at six twenty-five. Welcome, and an informal synopsis of the determination of energy compliance process. So, the legislature in its infinite wisdom decreed that there shall be a separate hearing process for rendering a determination of energy compliance. Thus, we're having a second hearing. There are separate and different hoops to jump through in order to achieve a determination of energy compliance. These include the fact that the town must request the determination, and the town must submit, complete and submit, the fourteen-page, sixteen now, sixteen-page, energy planning standards for municipal plans generated by the Department of Public Service. So, you have to go through that and specify where you satisfy all these standards. So, staff takes a look at the document. We check your standards checklist that you have to provide. Then we have committee review. When we are fully staffed, this committee review is performed by our energy committee. And this hearing would be staffed by our energy planner. Right now, I have the privilege and opportunity to be staffing the planning coordination committee's efforts to conduct the process. The end result will be a determination of energy compliance and a certificate of energy compliance, signed by the Chair of the Commission. It goes to the full commission for a vote. The reason it's desirable is that if you achieve the determination of energy compliance, then your plan has achieved substantial deference in section two forty-eight proceedings. The Public Utilities Commission's process for issuing a certificate of public good for energy generation and transmission facilities also applies to telecommunications. So, it is a desirable objective to achieve a determination of energy compliance. All right, I gotta read the notice of the hearing. Some places, a stack of paper. I will come up with it. Here it is. The Wyndham Regional Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March ten, twenty twenty, at six P M., or a little bit after. Draft in Town Garage twenty-two twenty, Bell Road, Grafton, Vermont. Consider the request the town has drafted for determination of energy compliance of its town plan, enhanced energy element, as provided for by twenty-four VSA, section forty-three fifty-two. The WRC will consider whether the town plan and energy element are consistent with the Vermont energy goals and meet the energy planning standards. The WRC will hear all comments relevant to its review of the town's plan and enhanced energy element at the public hearing. And I invite the representative of the town to present the energy plan and take it away there.
I guess I start with my perspective and four planning commission members here now and add to it. Four years ago, when I got on this board, I was given the draft at the point it was that, in that draft, there was a piece of paper that said, "Chapter five, energy," and it was blank. And my assumption, I never asked, there was not an energy chapter or was there one that was not used before that?
There was one in the previous iteration.
Okay, I don't remember reading that. But, and that sat blank for quite a while. And then your group, I don't know how, where, whatever, worked with three towns, Vernon, Londonderry, and Westminster, and somebody developed a template. Because in reading the three, they were very, very similar with nuances to meet their individual community needs, one being very different than Vernon kinds of things. We then took that same template. You gave us the raw data, we plugged in the raw data. Honestly, it was your template that gave us the four primary goals at the end of the chapter as well. And I will note, I talked in a previous meeting about some of the goals and recommendations, and it's so long. Nothing against these, but the select board needs to promote switching to wood, liquid, biofuels, biogases, and thermos whenever appropriate. Al, how you doing with that? I mean, there's a lot there. It is what it is. But, our resources examiner, Marion, came up and spent a full evening with us. At that point, we had the draft done, and she went in, kind of with two-twenty sandpaper, if you will, with a lot of nuance and little things to make differences. We obviously attended meetings and workshops and so forth. And so that's kind of how we got to where that is and then we put it in accordingly.
Well, thank you. And so, I will be happy to entertain comments from the public on the energy plan and whether it's deserving of a determination of energy compliance. I will offer that, from the WRC's perspective, it appears to merit a determination of energy compliance, and so is likely to achieve it, barring strenuous objections raised this evening. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. And I want to just make sure that there are no further comments at this time.
What are the next steps?
Next steps? Our board will vote to issue a determination of energy compliance, and we will render a copy thereof unto you. And I guess it goes to Public Utility Commission via the Northwest Regional Planning Commission, their sort of subcontractor for overseeing all of the RPCs, because all the RPCs are working with towns to do this process. So, did that answer your question? We vote, and then you get a certificate, and then you're good to go. All right. Well, hearing no further public comment, I would close the hearing at six thirty-eight.
We got six thirty-eight? Like to call the regular meeting of the Grafton Planning Commission to order, table the agenda, any changes, any want change on that? Not, and we'll accept consensus? Approval of the minutes? You guys have a chance to read the minutes from last meeting. I just have clerical, I don't know if it's supposed to be, but throughout our experiences, I always capitalized village park, and it's not capitalized in here, I don't know if it's supposed to be or not. That's the only comment I had, other than that. Anything else? Motion to approve? We got second members? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll take the minutes. All right. That's right, we missed the last meeting. That's right.
I've got the organization down. This is a direct comment. I hope you got my email on this one. I have had leadership roles in other organizations, and it is my fatal flaw that I end up just doing stuff rather than delegating. And I really am poor at it, but I cannot continue in this lifestyle. So, you know, as I said, I was asked four years ago to be on it, and I remember Eric saying, "It's only two hours a month." Eric, I remember you specifically saying that. I just want to point that out. I think it started on at two hours a month, but it's grown to more than that. So...
It's because you enjoy it so much.
You're reading my body language wrong. My proposal is either, if I'm the chair, I want to back away from all these other initiatives, and I'll throw out, except for maybe heading up the continued town plan edit. But, you know, I got these folders of things, the village center designation, I've done nothing with since November. Now, the stuff's mostly done, but I need somebody to take it across the finish line. The town survey, we really went gung ho for a while last summer through the fall. Same thing, I've done nothing with it. And I don't have a plan for it, by the way, because remember the original plan, we had a timeline this summer, and we don't have that plan anymore. You know, we do have funding for a municipality grant, and again, somebody to spearhead that. And maybe if there's no interest in it, we say, "No, we got to put it on the back burner for other things." You know, we were kind of lucky to have Chris on the select board, and that increased our communication, but we don't have that anymore. And that's two times a month on top of everything else going on. I don't know if there's somebody willing to act in that role, but that communication needs to increase and continue to get better. And then the other little ones I wrote down, I don't know how little they are. You know, last meeting, we said, "Oh, the DRB and PC support, we got to get somebody in there." I've done nothing with that. And Chuck is not here tonight. He does have two meetings left, April and May, because I think he said the end of May he's done. If I remember, it might be the end of June, so maybe three. The DRB is all set, is that correct? The board has approved as not interim, but the actual administrative officer, Bill, correct?
Yes, so that would have to...
So that's, we don't have to deal with that, but we do have to figure out what, if anything, we're going to do for our role.
Correct, for a clerk or a minute taker or secretary or an advisor.
And honestly, I'll put it out there, if I am not the chair, I'd be glad if the clerk in charge is taking the minutes and doing that piece and taking one of these other things out. But, again, without getting into it, I estimate, because I kind of timed it last week, I spent about eight hours just doing emails for this committee. So, the chair has a lot of busy work stuff, because, you know, we got six hundred residents, not everybody uses mails me, but when emailing, I got to have a dialogue. And, you know, that one dialogue for that one person for fifteen minutes is not too bad, but there's a lot of them. So, same thing, Eric, you're vice chair, right? I think.
I don't think so.
I don't know if we select anybody after Lisa was, actually, but we kind of created that position, and that's our requirement, but the clerk, I think, is one we need to deal with, though. You know, that one has been fine when Chuck was here, but he's not going to be in the long run, and when he's not here, the notes are not as copious, bottom line. So I open up the floor, you guys.
To give you some perspective on that, taking good meeting notes has been a real problem, looking back in history. We've had some really good note takers. Bill Kearns falls in that category. And we've had some that, quite frankly, didn't even show up to the meetings and did a terrible job when they did. It has fallen, it has been a real problem. And we need to have somebody that's consistent, that does a reasonably good job so that the historical record can be easily seen in the flow of the notes. In other words, you just can't say that there was a discussion on such and such and not have any meat to the discussion getting into the notes. You have to have a little bit of the flavor of the give and take of a meeting for them to be meaningful. And we've had just a terrible time in general of getting people on a mercenary basis to come in here and take notes. And it does not work well for one of us to do it, because that takes away our concentration during the meeting to attend to the meeting rather than to take notes. Really need someone to perform that role and do it well.
Well, and that's hopefully, again, somebody, and we can do it as a committee here, I don't know whether two hours will not spend too much time with it, to do some research into it, who's out there. And I guess what we as a board do need to decide before that research is done, and again, I'd rather wait, but I'll point this one piece out, is what is it we're looking for? I absolutely agree, the clerical piece. The other part is, how much planning knowledge do we need? Some say, "Not much." Occasionally, you have a question, we can talk to Bill, we can talk to John Bennett, somebody can get those answers. It is convenient, past committee knows what they're talking about in the room, so you get a real fine answer and make decisions, but they're far harder to find and probably even more expensive. So, again, we got that down below. Again, I open the floor to a nomination for chair, though. And how you want to proceed with that?
What, to nominate you?
You're saying you're going to take one of these committees? That's what you guys are saying when you say that.
I guess that's the penalty.
We can go the other way, and I'll take the committee, I don't care.
A second?
What?
The nomination.
All in favor? Now let's see if I can get it done, what I really need to get done. I'm going to jump to clerk. Who's going to take clerk? First one on the board. If we hire somebody, I see that job as just making sure it's done. You know, camera's running, I say this because you know I really respect and love having Chuck here. His biggest weakness was every Wednesday night he has a meeting. He does this as his second job. So Wednesday morning, he wakes up to his full job, goes to a meeting, and he's got to have those minutes to bill by Thursday, well, he's working Thursday, for us to meet the statute of having them posted. So, the clerk's job is to maybe just say, "Hey, Chuck, send me what you got, I can clean them up," or "Hey, don't forget to get something like that," and then to act as a sub, honestly, when he's not here or whoever we hire. So... Clerk?
If the clerk's job is separate from the minute taking, then it doesn't amount to a whole lot of work.
I would agree. Only thing I would ask is, listen, Chuck's in the job. I would agree, only thing I would ask is, let's, can Chuck's in the job? If Chuck contacts his clerk over the weekend and says, "Am I going to be there Tuesday?" I leave the clerk to deal with that and find a substitute, you know, and honestly, you know, and we know people that can take notes well enough, just get a community member to come in, and, um, I don't know, ask Al maybe, or somebody that knows, we have a budget to pay somebody, so if it's a sub, there's no big formal process in, in hiring, isn't it, just get somebody in here on a irregular basis that might be willing to take notes for two hours. I forgot what their standard rate is, but, you know, it's a stipend, it won't move you to the next tax bracket, but at least, um, get her done. So did I hear a volunteer, or what did I hear?
Clerk, you're nominating Chris.
Chris, do you accept?
I don't know.
Okay.
Trying to limit additional duties at this point, I'm, you know, currently chairing the DCA and the DOA and the DRB, and vice chairing the...
The WCA.
So I'm just trying to, you know, keep a balance.
If the clerk's position is separate from...
Yeah, I know, that's the thing, I couldn't guarantee, you know, I'm glad to follow up and make sure the minutes got posted, and any, any of the admin requirements are, are done in a timely manner, but as far as stepping into that role as, as minute taker...
And that's not what I'm hoping for, with your... But I put a slash there, but, but to be responsible that the minutes are done, not to take them, but to be responsible they are done, there's a difference there, I hope,
Well, would that give me delegation authority on the board then?
And...
Give you a hammer.
What we have now with no minute taker tonight is, is recording, my recording, my note taking here, and then tomorrow night, that'll be posted, and I'll, I'll sit and kind of watch that and put my notes together, that's the best we've got for now, um, so...
Dave, with, assuming the video is here at the meeting...
Who are you going to? Except when we do, it makes it home.
Does, does the minute person have to physically be here? I mean, somebody else could do what you're proposing to do, and if it meant they didn't have to spend the night traveling here...
We'll just transcribe, just, for the next day, twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Right, I mean, does that open up an option for somebody else to do it that might not travel out here? Right.
I just got in trouble today, it's forty-eight hours, you know, fact has to get to on TV.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. I started one in today, it was twenty-four hours, they lost, so, told me they have only three hours, so... So I'll try to get this to them in the morning.
Well, you say usually I find on Wednesday night when I sit down and relax, it's all great.
Yeah, usually when it's live, you can get them right away, but our, our thing fell tonight, it happens.
Is it possible to post for a job for note taker for this committee?
We can, but that's different from what I'm asking for. I want a board member to take on responsibility, as many boards have, not to take notes, but to be the person, I mean, when I was on the, the town, or on the, the school board, you know, I was clerk for a while, all I do is sign at the bottom, because that's the official role of a clerk on a board. Again, yeah, we can hire somebody, and we will, we don't expect somebody to do it, but, but to have somebody else responsible for it, other than me, I'm going very blunt about it, is what I'm looking for in this situation.
And yes, we have advertised for this position before.
Well, it sounds like you're in a bit of a dilemma, because you really don't have anybody right now to take the notes, so if you appoint a clerk...
Well, we've got, we've got Chuck, Chuck's not here to know, Chuck will be here for three more months, we have three months to find somebody, is what we've got, yeah. But again, this, Chuck has always made it clear, this is not his job priority, he's got a full-time job at Rockingham, and tonight, they called him up, said, "We need you meeting," you know, I don't argue with that, that piece is right, so... Not the first time, it's always a good excuse, for good reason, but that's the way it is. Where do we stand on this one? Say, a year ago, I sat here and I just said, "Oh, I'll move on," and all of a sudden, year went on, and I had everything, and I decided this year, no, not moving on, we're, we're here, and if this is the end of the meeting, so be able to call another one in a month and figure out what to do. We can go back to seven members and talk to the board about doing that, and get two more workpeople on it.
How many new members are there now?
There are five, we went down...
So we just have one missing, Valerie?
Valerie, she's not here.
Valerie would be a nice little... Just kidding.
She will be arriving, but she said she's going to be late to the door. We can go to the other ones and come back to it, but I can't accept the chair job and leave this meeting without these duties filled, because I know where they're going to fall. Again, I just, we all have a busy, busy life, you know, my wife and my mother are the ones that are paying for this, and enough of that. All right. I have taken a lot of lead on the town plan, and I have no problem continuing being the holder of the draft, a- and the one that can, puts edits together and that kind of thing, and leads to that, i- if you want me to. To me, that's the biggest thing we've got to do in the next year, is those pieces, and I do have some alternative plans when we get to town plan, and how I might want to proceed in that piece, um, but that does mean the biggest assignment here is the town survey. I'm going to throw something out really wrong. Just like the clerk, you don't need to be the one that does all the work, you could reach out to a community member that has expressed some interest in this, and help them work on it, but I don't want to mention any names at this time.
Are you looking at me?
I think I am.
So, let me just clarify, we, I have not expressed an interest in the overall town survey, I am particularly interested in the water portion, and tomorrow night... Tomorrow night, um, and Matt has been, has sent us documentation, Chris is familiar with the, uh, uh, water portion of the town survey, and tomorrow evening in our water meeting, it's on our agenda to talk about...
And I've sent you the one question banks, you have those?
Yeah, are we going to have our own survey, or are we going to mesh with the town survey? So, I really think that at least the water portion is going to be covered by our water commission, and that was my specific interest.
Let me agree to know, is that a shortened out of survey?
Yeah, I would not be willing to take on the, uh, entire project of the town survey, although I do think that some way of gathering the town's input is a really important objective of the planning commission.
And without getting into it, we will want to know what the town, what the water group's doing, so we don't bombard the two surveys in the same month, that stuff, so, we've got some... Right, yeah, so we'll, we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Well, what do you want to do with this town survey, folks? I mean, I can take that and do the town plan to somebody else.
I'll continue with the survey.
Would you like to take that over?
Yeah.
All right, and I'll be glad to work with you, I got everything together, and I've got some opinions, but, um, you know, I'll be, go and have a cup of coffee and talk about next steps if you want, but I appreciate that, all right.
I wrapped my head around it a few times, and, so...
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll throw an easy one out, wastewater liaison, since we got people, I always ask, somebody give me a report, I don't ever put one person's name next to you, just, instead of looking around at everybody. Chair would make sense.
Share it?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, I'm, we've been sharing it.
Right, and that's true, I just want to make sure it's, it's, it's covered. Eric, fill us in, we have the right to two representatives to the Wyndham Regional Commission, is that...
That's right.
And for the last two ye- well, since Lisa got off, we've only had one on it.
That's correct.
So we need two reps, we need better than one, but we need at least one, Eric, are you willing to continue to do that?
Oh, sure, yeah, um, where we are really lacking is because, um, I'm on the project review committee and the energy committee, we are lacking coverage in the natural resources committee, which is probably the second most important committee in WRC, and aside from that, there's, um, probably of lesser importance, but certainly still something people should consider, uh, there's a transportation committee, um, there's a, a committee that basically does the, uh, town plan reviews, the planning coordination committee, um, but natural resources is the one that we really should have a second commissioner covering.
What's the commitment?
It's basically, it's basically, um, for each committee, uh, a trip to Brattleboro for about an hour and a half meeting once a month.
And additional homework kinds of stuff, occasionally readings and that kind of stuff, we have one, we're not required to have any, two would be much better. Does it have to be somebody from this board?
No.
No, it can be anybody.
Maybe we could, have we advertised in the Grafton News, to see if that might spark some interest?
Yeah, especially for natural resources, that sounds interesting.
It is interesting, it's influential, and it's something that, uh, really should be covered in a feedback sense, factor of town.
No, it's appropriate, but just throwing names out, first one comes out, it's somebody like Ron Pellet, who is wanting to get involved in the community, and he has planning background, doesn't he, I mean, I don't know if he'd be interested or not, it's the first one that comes to mind, just because, you know, I, I see him reaching out, I'll be honest, the other one comes to mind is Al, just because it's natural resources, and that's his expertise and his passion, so, but I think Al's plate's kind of full these days, so I, you know...
Would you think about posting it, or letting it...
I, I think I have no problem with that, I think it's a great idea.
Can I get involved now? Be a great entryway?
It's, it's a select board appointment, but typically the planning commission will fill names, pass them for, for the position.
So if it's a select board appointment, and, and Al, I want to make sure you hear this question, would it be most appropriate to, to ask the sele- oh, excuse me, Kathy, I was sitting right there, you're so visually quiet for a minute, would it be appropriate to go to the select board and ask them to post it, since it's their appointment, I don't know the proper, I don't want to step over bounds and those kinds of things, what would be the right process?
I, I, I think we could market it, I mean, and we'll make the recommendation to the select board, just, you know, a perfect candidate, or candidates come forward, and then they can make the appointment.
I know you guys aren't in for me, you have the right to agree, does that sound all right?
You can nominate, and the select board can either hold on with your nomination or, or not, and I've seen it done both ways in the last ten...
So what he's saying, I, what she's saying, I think, is the idea is we want to post the Grafton News, saying we're looking for nominations to represent Grafton with the Wyndham Regional, and make it clear somehow that we don't appoint, we just move the nomination forward.
It's irregular, there's, I shouldn't say it's irregular, they are regular, but they are kind of spotted all over the, the monthly map.
The evenings?
They are, by and large, evenings, there are a few that are, um, during the day, but, uh, those are more, uh, executive kind of functions, where they, uh, have constituents of the, the chairs of the various committees, um, typically they'll be sometime between, or the earliest of about six o'clock, uh, no later than seven o'clock starting time in the evening.
They're always that in Brattleboro at the office, or...
Yeah, they are, that's, that's a brag, but that's the way it is.
And if you've never been to the office, give yourself an extra forty-five minutes first time you go there.
It's a little, yeah, it's down on Alleyway. I think it's Hunter Dunham Theater down there, it's down underneath, well, the Dunham Theater is down under where WRC offices are. It's down on Alleyway anyway, they're really close to where the...
All right, so...
Um, I, yeah, I can put the press release in the Grafton News, if...
Would you like to do that?
We can do that.
Okay.
And Eric will give you a call for details.
And again, I'll even work on the word smithing, we're not looking to appoint somebody, we're looking for nominations...
We're looking for candidates who might be interested.
Yeah, you don't have to get in all the weeds, just, you know, that kind of thing, and then we'll go from there, and again... All right, I guess, and, and Valerie, you're back, we've had an uncomfortable twenty minutes we sat and stared at each other, we're going to do some more staring. I have agreed to take on the chair for the next time, as long as others take on all responsibilities other than, and I'll continue to be the lead on the town plan piece, and the first thing up was, for me, somebody to act as clerk, and we got quiet, and I'll be clear, as we've discussed, my opinion is, somebody to make sure the minutes get done, not somebody to take the minutes, but if we hire somebody, then to make sure that they're showing up to the meeting, if they don't show up, you know, can we get a substitute in there? Al brought up a fascinating point that I've never considered, is this person may, I don't know the laws, not even have to be here, they could go home and the next day, call up Sapa and transcribe that into a set of minutes, as long as they're to bill by Thursday. Excuse me, Fact TV.
I work for both.
Oh, do you? I, I, I spend a lot of time in Springfield, so this is, Akimotv, no, it's a different one. And I've said, I, you know, I'm not going to leave this meeting with a role of chair unless these roles are filled, so that's kind of where we stand, so I'm going to put a few, would you willing, be willing to act as the official chair on this? As the...
I could try, I was noodling on my way here, thinking, is it fair if I can't step up and do a lot more to continue on, but I'm willing to try. I'm willing to try it out, how about that?
Like I say, the, the idea would be, the only law I have is, I was on the school board, and I was a clerk for a while, I told these folks, and you had somebody else take the minutes, I'd have to make sure the minutes got done, and sign off if they were accurate, that I could present.
Well, I did it for the library for a few years before I chaired that board, and it wasn't so bad, I think we have been taking very generous meeting, meeting minutes, if you look at what the law requires, we're actually not required to have as extensive minutes as we have, so that's the other option, is to, but I think it's better for people as a whole to know what we discussed.
The background of why votes.
The way we need to do is record, you know, what, and action was taken, what the vote was on those actions, but I'm willing to take a stab at it.
I appreciate that, it's... Did I have to stare at you?
Do we have somebody lined up?
We do not, um, the idea would be to put an ad in the Grafton News, kind of thing, it, it's down below, and, and we'll figure out something formal that we're going to do with that.
But you're on, you're on for tonight, sorry.
All right, yeah, and like I said, I'm going to take those tomorrow, and then I can deal with that. We had vice chair, there's no rule that says we have to have one, I can't remember why we added one, um...
In case the chair wasn't here.
Okay, do you want that position again? If so, who?
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that position has a job title and other duties as a sign.
By the chair.
This will be six, all day, next month, so... All right, that should take care of that, I think, I'll put it together, and there may be some others, uh, to be clear, you're, you're going to write something for the Grafton News for, um, the Wyndham Regional Commission representative, is that the title of the job there?
It's a Wyndham Regional Commissioner.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Well, for natural resources, that's...
No, no, no.
That's a voluntary committee you can get on, he'd like, whoever gets the job, to get on that committee for us.
Whoever goes there can request to be on...
I see.
Certain committees.
I see, I misunderstood that.
And that's up to the WRC hierarchy to say yes or no.
Can we post the minute taker position at the same time, or is Bill, in his acting role, going to do that to help us facilitate?
Bill's not with us, he's DRB only.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and yes, it's down below, but that's probably, my thought is put an ad in the paper, and if we time it together, you know...
Well, that's what I'm just wondering, that's the only reason I bring it up again now, is do we want that to be part of the same blurb in the...
My only concern is, I started to think, yes, is one is voluntary position, the other is a paid position.
I know.
And that might be better to separate them out from that.
Yeah, might be better to have, to have two separate press releases, just so people aren't confused.
All right, well, then maybe I should submit the other one, just so it's clear.
Okay, and, you know, I can CC you an advanced copy of what I'm sending to you.
Wait, I don't want to get into it too deep, it's been about twenty-five an hour with the planning expert at Chuck, I don't know what it was, so we got to make some decisions on it, that stuff, we have a budget, we have a line item, so we've got to...
What's the, uh, regular rate, uh, for town employees? What's the regular rate for town employees? I seem to recall.
Temporary is eighteen dollars an hour.
And that's what this would be, you've got to set.
Temporary, temporary employee.
That's good.
Alright, then that's, yeah, that clarifies and it's like easy for what we can and cannot do, alright.
Dave, are you looking for someone for a village center designation committee?
Oh, I just slipped right over that, yeah, we each need to take that and then finish one.
Select board liaison.
I'm, what, there's a person in town, I think it would be very interested in this, his name is Craig Rugless. He's got a huge interest in the vitalization of the village.
What's the last name?
Rugless, R-U-G-L-E-S-S, just for your consideration or your thought.
Honestly, I was hoping the chair of this, who does the legwork, the stepper, is somebody from the committee, because I think it's got to be somebody from here.
Okay.
To be clear, this is where the situation is at. There is a checklist, about fifty items, we've gone through the checklist for three years. The work that needs to be done is to, once the Wyndham Regional approves it, then we're allowed to do the application. We have a letter that's like five years old from the select board, so he's got to go to the select board and ask for a new letter and an update. Not a big deal, but it's got to be done, there's a couple of paragraphs, I think, that have to be written, there's some summary sheets. Somebody asked to hold it, Jeff, down at the Wyndham Regional, he's got the map that, I apologize, who's the name that came down from Montpelier that day and walked the town with us?
Amore.
Amore, thank you, Richard, Amore. He's got that map, all he's got to do is make it pretty, he's got the technology to do that, and we've got to have somebody liaison of that, and then put it together in a bundle, and then again, walk it across the finish line. Volunteers. If not, I can reach outside the committee, but boy, you know, and honestly, I don't know this guy, and hell, if she'd be willing, my first choice would be Lisa Kissel just because she's the one that started it way back when, pushed it so hard, so.
I mean, as a courtesy, we could reach out and ask her if she would have interest, since she's done so much of the legwork and invested a lot in it, it's a very good work, just as a courtesy.
This Jeff, is he a store owner down here? I don't know.
Pardon me?
Chris, is he a store owner?
Craig.
Craig, oh, wait, well, Chris, Craig.
Craig, yeah.
And what's his interest? I, I don't want to be nosey about the guy.
Yeah, no, I, I think Lisa's a great idea because she has taken so much initiative and has.
I don't want to say yes.
But if you need a backup, you might want to think about Craig.
And I, you should still designate one of us as the board.
The point person. And I'll be honest, I don't want to back off a little bit from my fucking attitude I've had, it's pretty rugged, aren't you? This one's so close that I don't have a problem, nobody else takes lead, it's, you know, these are some I's and T's kind of thing, and I would imagine, again, spring break comes around, I'll just time to root that one out. Big ones, the survey and some other stuff were my biggest concerns. Are there other obligations that, that I'm not thinking of that we need to make sure we've got somebody keeping their eye on? Not, we'll move on. I'll say that.
I'll take the village designation.
Thank you, very much. Excellent, and I've got a full folder, same thing, you can talk, it's just some, some busy work that goes in that, I'm not giving my hero twice, it's cool.
I can take the select board liaison.
Would you? I'll say Kathy this time because she didn't call me before, and it's not my job or my role, could you kind of help make sure that big important information gets towards us? And I know you don't have a liaison in your committee, and I'd ask Al, but I, I keep asking Al for a lot of things in life. Just say, Chris is our liaison, if something comes up, you know, a quick email, I know you didn't make the meeting, Chris, but you ought to be aware that this affects the planning commission, you know, just easy. When that connection falls apart, it's just not a good thing, and, and, so, alright, great. If there's nothing else under that, I'm going to move to public comment.
Well, thank you for all your work.
Not me, it's a team.
No, you've done the huge.
But then I get the boings, let's say it's a team.
You asked people to public comment, but on your agenda, you're going to talk about village parks, is that correct?
That is correct.
So I don't need to make it a comment, just wait and see what happens.
Okay.
Can I have an extra copy of the agenda?
I asked you to do.
Thank you so much.
Or might I change the agenda, I asked you to change the agenda, I got the date wrong for the next meeting, you want to fix it, it's twenty twenty, not twenty nineteen. Forgot to mention that, I noticed that this morning. Alright, if no public comment, I will move on. Eric, anything from the Wyndham Regional Commission?
No, they've canceled many meetings right and left, there's nothing, nothing happening right now.
Okay. DRB folks, you got anything going on, you had a minor subdivision.
Yes, we, we, we closed the Fisher subdivision hearing in early February, that was approved, and then we had a second minor subdivision, Route one twenty-one, the Young Lake subdivision, just, and that was a minor.
Nothing controversial?
Nothing, no development, no development is planned, and there, there's nothing currently pending for, for March.
Village wastewater, by the way, you want to add, and where you guys at with that?
We're working on the, the survey, it's up next, and the report from, from the state on the CIC.
Thanks, man, perfect.
Alright, the survey, town, why do I assume, or just the village, or it's part of your discussion?
Part of the discussion.
Part of the discussion. Very good, select board, anything?
I was just going to add, it's, it's going to be like much more in depth than, you know, anything that would have been included in the town.
And you two are probably aware, if you're not on the committee, she asked three, four weeks ago, if you remember, we had a four or five page question, just water questions, and she, she's got. Anything we've come across over the last year and a half, she's got electronic copies of. Alright, alright, anything, any other updates? If not, we'll move on, I don't have any correspondence, anything that happened, okay, nothing there. Unfinished business, town plan, I'll give you an update, and I just told John I'm going to take a happy day off, and maybe later this week, early next week, go down and visit with him. That's just my style, I don't do emails and phone calls trying to get stuff done, and this is one of the things on the agenda. Where I'm at now, John, Bennett will be there, I think you all know I have a lot of respect for the guy, my guess is virtually every question we would have, he'd have an answer to, but I have a perception problem with one person having all the answers, I'd rather have a wider range. I reached out to, help me with the name, from the Act two fifty.
Stephanie Dino?
And she was a very direct no, she says, we do not have time to do those kinds of things. So I would very much like an alternative of somebody that can act, answer questions and talk with some level of expertise about Act two fifty. Any thoughts on that at all? You know, there's people that have done a lot of work, the Wyndham Foundation, other groups, et cetera.
Well, either Linda Madison, who's the Act two fifty coordinator to the north.
And those names you gave me, and we were having a separate talk, but I want to make sure it's formalized here.
Julia Schmidt, who is now a commissioner for, for Act two fifty, and she is retired coordinator, so she sees it from both sides.
And whereabouts is she?
She lives in, uh, Weatherspoon.
It's not too far commute, she could come down here, and you said Linda works out of the Springfield office, so that's again, wherever she lives, can you?
Yeah, she lives up near.
She in North?
She, she has a pair of commute every day, yeah. It's her choice.
My director comes to the same place, he lives in Bradford, drives down every day. Alright, I did contact Sam, help me with his last name, Fortineski, Shinneski, he responded with, I have to ask my wife, and I have not heard back from him, so. That's kind of, I don't know, I know the guy, he sits about some kids, too, that he's got kids, that he's obviously a priority, so.
What's the, what's, what's the objective of this?
That's one of the things that we haven't done, our next meeting is this. My goal is to have a series of questions that are clarifying questions. I honestly think that those of us coming to these meetings for the last many, many years won't learn a lot from this, it's really for our community to give them a solid understanding. It's not to sway them about a map or about anything else, but to understand A, the town plan, B, Act one seventy-one, and C, Act two fifty, I think those three and how they intersect. Which lead to the chapter three land use section, is what I see this as. I don't know how long it's going to be, an hour maybe, maybe more. This came about, again, from a variety of meetings where a lot of questions were asked that we on this group may roll our eyes a little, like, are you seriously asking that, but we live in it, so we know the answers because we've been in these weeds for years. Our community doesn't know it, and they ought to know. You know, it's not a clear answer, somebody said, well, what's the impact of the map on my assessment? Well, I can't definitively say that answer is zero, because that's not a pure, pure answer, you know, but it's so tangential that it's hard to explain. It's closer to zero than it's a percent of its impact, but it's convoluted, and so, long answer to your short question, is to get these people to talk about that in a very candid, open, and honestly, hopefully friendly environment with not a lot of stress, like, we got our adopted plan by next month and all the other things we've been living with.
So are you getting John Bennett to come with us?
John says he'll be here. I did get Dave, tell me the last name, our moderator, Ross. Ross is going to somewhat facilitate it to keep me out of it, personality wise, and he'll, you know. Although he said he wants to know more about it because, based on what he's seen, it may be better for him to schedule colonoscopy. That is a quote in writing, and he's holding that in reserve, he said.
There is another staffer from WRC that has the particular talents of wildlife connectivity and forest blocks and all that sort of things, Margot Gia.
Is she new? I've never seen her name, and all of a sudden I've gotten emails, her announcing stuff.
She is new.
Okay.
Well, not new to many of us.
I recognize the name.
She's from Saxons River, and she was on the, I'll say Watershed Alliance or something like that, she's the one that you.
That's where I know her from, that's, that's.
Set the plan outside of the.
We're in the tree of property.
Right.
And she's done the knotweed, and she's helped with removing the debris on Saxons River.
Would she be an appropriate one that would fit this bill?
Well, if, if you're.
I don't know, if you don't know.
The Act one seventy-one. I think she is, she's sort of the point person now, even though she's new down there at WRC for that kind of discussion. She's part of, when the Wyndham Regional held one of those little meetings that you're talking about earlier with John, down at Nibbuk, she was one of the two staffers that came to facilitate that meeting.
Definitely check into that.
Great idea.
And I don't want to be redundant, I definitely don't want to have people from a long way and end up sitting and not speaking, so, like, I don't want five people that know Act one seventy-one, and get all the information from one of the other four just to say nothing. Anybody, I did not reach out to the A and R, we talked about it, is that appropriate for Act one seventy-one, is it a different organization, is Margot the right person, and let's not be redundant.
Let's, go ahead.
I think one thing that you might want to consider is somebody from urban and community forestry. From urban and community forestry, and forest and parks, so they're.
That's a subdivision of forest and park.
It's, it's position, you know, forest and parks has several different.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're the ones that are dealing with Emerald Ashbore, and if you haven't been following it, Emerald Ashbore has a chance to be a major impact.
You were following it, you and I've had some emails in regards to that, I don't want to divert too far off with the focus of this, no, you know.
But I, I, if you're looking for subjects, I just passed it out.
As a subdivision, it's got to be addressed correctly, and I've talked about it in depth on that. The other, the other person, and I forgot the person's name, is the person that, is the person that develops the BioFinder, and you've had questions about that, you know, the issues about how it's laid out, and to have somebody come and talk about, you know, why is the map the way it is, why did you identify this as a large forest priority block versus this not being, what is the rationale? And, and John thinks he has a guy, I don't know if he's contacted me, I didn't ask him to know you, out of Montpelier, that is. My perception of John's description was really excited about it, not emotional to the point, like, he's like, I know the right answers, but he's the guy, the guy, he's like, I'd love to come in my car and come down and talk to you guys about that, you know, like, that's what we're going to do, yeah, you know, I'd love my BioFinder map, so. Are there any, anybody else, we're looking at four or five people with this list.
How much into the weeds are you going to go in Act two fifty, because I'm not sure that that is really the focus that we're trying to accomplish in this meeting.
I don't answer, I think, but.
No, it, it just might be beneficial to be updated, the legislature is taking up Act two fifty, or they have already taken up Act two fifty, the, the session to update it.
That's right.
For significant updates in, in the fifty years that, that has existed, and they're taking into consideration things that weren't around fifty years ago, like the forest blocks, village center designations, and those will be incorporated into the new Act fifty, and then there's also an initiative from the, at the state level, from the governor's office, to consolidate the review boards from the nine local boards, consolidate into three state level boards, and so that would result in lots of local control in effect, but the House.
More centralization.
Right, and which makes sense from the state perspective, but, you know, from the local perspective, obviously not popular, and, you know, the, the House does not support that, it's not even, it's not a partisan issue. Everyone's on board with keeping the status quo, retaining local control with the nine existing boards that we have, and no reason to expect that the Senate wouldn't follow the, the House lead on that, and there will probably be, you know, some give and take with the governor, but we, we hope that, that, that doesn't change. But the, the point is, it's, it's in flux, and there are some changes, and it might be beneficial just to be updated on, on what is new with Act two fifty.
Again, I don't know how broad you want to go, you mentioned a discussion about the future, and I guess going back to Eric's question, my perception is, so that the residents have, it's a hard answer, because going to the weeds so quickly, I think of John's nuanced, it wasn't nuanced, it was a clear answer as to if you have an adopted plan or not, what is your standing? And the answer was clear when he said it, but again, that's one thread in a very complex fabric, and so to have somebody, you know, she wants to build a garden shed in the back of her house, does she need to get an Act two fifty permit? Well, we don't want to ask every one of those silly direct questions, but what are the general rules? And so to have somebody articulate enough to be able to parse through that in a way that we can benefit from it, and again, it's not a forty-five minute dissertation, it's.
We did have a person from Vermont League of Citizens and Towns, an attorney, came down and gave a talk on Act two fifty, was over in a school, it was quite an eye opener. I don't know how many of you attended that, but I came away from that thinking.
That's great research, I didn't think it would be.
I thought it was bad, now I think it's terrible.
I, I didn't think of somebody from that organization, I, I don't access them as a resource, legwork is the all time.
Well, I was, I was a, a person who was a lawyer in dealing with. Well, that was a person who was a lawyer in dealing with Act 250. BLCT is a resource that the town can draw from because we subscribe to their...
Let me give the old Bill and or Joe for a conduit to them, and maybe I'll go to their website as well and see what I can find.
The only thing I definitely see happening is that if you take too much of a scattered ground approach, you've got all of these experts. How many hours are you gonna have people sit there?
That's the balance exactly right, yeah. So we got to narrow it down, four I think is good, five is a maximum in my opinion. You know, three wouldn't be terrible if they're good, solid three, and three to state. Let me make some calls and we'll get back to you on that. Do you folks use and understand or can access Google Docs at all, a little bit, not at all? You know what that is? I have one, yes, one maybe, one not sure.
I don't use it, but I know it's like it's using.
Yeah, Austin can help you on this one. Basically, it's a like a Microsoft Word file, but I'll share you a link which will allow you to type on a Microsoft Word file, and when you type words, you will all see it. My thought is to put a Google Doc out there with some preliminary questions, and then you guys add, edit, comment, whatever you want. I don't plan on having another meeting for this, but we do need to communicate as we organize this to make sure that it's something that's professionally developed. I will put a longer invitation in the next draft of news for this when I start drafting something. Many have already got these school reserves, so that piece is taken care of. We'll be at the school, hopefully get enough that we need more chairs than we have here. So we've got three or four weeks to develop it. My first priority is getting that definite list in of people and list of questions, and we'll go from there. Yes?
Just a comment, Eric. You gotta be a little conscious of people traveling at any distance. And if they, if they see what your agenda for the meeting is, they say, "All right, I'm driving two hours or an hour or whatever to this meeting, and there's four or five of us. At the most, I'm only gonna get talked five, 10 minutes."
Absolutely.
Might be better to say, "Tonight is Act 250, tonight is A and R, another night is this." It means more commitment on our part, but you're gonna get more out of that, and...
And the focus of this one is not really Act 250, but it is. It's the town plan and land use in there. And that means Act 171, Act 250, but not a lot. And maybe the best way to go is, I mean, honestly, I absolutely respect John. I've said that 100 times. He could answer every question, he could do this whole thing with one person. That's not really a panel discussion, though, you know? But two or three maybe.
Being able to tie it all together.
John, tell it perfectly, he planned it to us originally. And just being able to bring it down to the liaison, I mean, the general public.
And Margot would probably be willing to come in. At least she's close. Let me do some work on this, I'll send some emails, and we'll figure something out on it. We're going forward with it, that's my plan, I see nothing stopping us, there's a lot of work to be done. But we've got three weeks to get her done. All right? All right. Village Park, the next one up. I sent you an email two or three days ago, and Al's here. Al knows a lot more about this than I do. They have seen project review sheet, I've seen the emails, including the comment on the back. And for those that weren't part of this, the link can be in background.
Stephanie, Al.
Is one of the persons. Who filled this out, Bill? No, but who submitted it? You or Bill? You filled it out. It's called a project review sheet, without getting too far into it. It is a non-binding document asking them to look into, do we need to get what permits? In his response, one of the questions we had at the last meeting in reading the statute was talked about 10 acres. And our question was, anything over 10 acres, does that mean the size of the plot or the size of the project? And I'm kinda looking at Al as I say this, based on their response, it's the size of the project. Because they clearly said, "No Act 250 permit is required." Now, John, John Fay is the writer of this. He did make the comment on the backside under other. There's a section mostly on Act 250, Stephanie signed off on that, and under others, there's some wetland stuff. And then other approvals or comments. And the comment that caught everyone's attention is, "Compliance with the new town plan will need to be addressed." And I sent Al once he sent me that, some follow-up, and with some questions like, "What does he really mean?" And John responded with, "It is a town matter, not under state jurisdiction because the site is not under Act 250." So I probably shouldn't have made that note on my PR sheet. At this point, what barriers are there for you moving forward?
As far as I can see, I would like a statement or something from the planning commission that says, "We don't object to what is outlined in that project review sheet." And I know some people are saying, "Al, you're being awful..." I'll skip the word. But you're taking it too literal where it says, "No development in the village park." But I've had some stuff said about me and posters and whatnot. I don't wanna go there again. Trust me, I can show you the poster. My wife took them down. But I want to have the opportunity that we have a dialogue, and you say, "Okay, yeah, it says no development in the park." Now, the option is to look at a 14 by 14-foot lean-to and a parking area that is probably gonna be less than a half an acre, and say, "Those are all things that are catch-up for the fact that for 20, 30 years, nobody's done anything in a park." The two little buildings that were there, they're all deteriorated, they're not worth trying to restore. So the lean-to replaces that. When I had the recreational forester walking the park with me and make his observations, he says, "Yeah, parking area and get people off the street." When I talked to Patrick Cooper, and he says, "People get to the bottom of that hill, and they don't wanna walk up that hill to go up into the park." So by going up, a little bit up Fire Pond Road, put a little bit of a parking area there, a kiosk, a map, an outlay of what's there, people can park there. And then you're using that grade of Fire Pond Road instead of climbing the hill. And long-term, I'd like to see kind of a little path in there that makes it for walker or, you know, a wheelchair, so a little, not the whole park, but a little piece of the park where somebody handicapped or older person can get into the park. So those are the things in mind. You could easily say, "Hey, that's just catching up on years of neglect." Or you can say, "Nope, town plan says no development, that's development. And our intent was, don't do that."
Well, I make a motion that we find the proposed village park project compliant with the town plan.
And we strongly support it.
And we support it. We find it compliant with the town plan.
Can we just do the first part and not the second part? For the sake, because I don't have enough information. Like, I don't know how Rob Paul feels about this, for instance, who lives up that road. I don't know what other people in town feel like, but I don't have enough information, so I'm square. I'm not opposed to saying that it's not gonna upset, be upset by the town, upset the town plan, or the town plan is contradictory to doing that. I'm fine with that first part, the second part I have a little more trouble with.
It is my intent, and my, this is my first stop. So my intent is that if it's not a conflict with the town plan, then we can proceed and we can have a public input. When we have a drawing, it says, "This is what we're gonna do." People can look at, say, "I'm definitely opposed," or, "I don't like it, but it's good for the town," so.
Dave? So, I think this is more in line with a recreational improvement than a development. So we worded it a little differently. But number, this is number one. Number two, after we give it our blessing, does it go to the Development Review Board to now contact you?
No, the DRB, we only have two legal municipal documents that guide us, and that's the subdivision regulations and the flood zoning regs, and this falls underneath it.
Either one of them. Yeah, really legally is a question to Al. And I really respect you jumping through as many hoops as you can find to make sure every I is dotted, every T before you move forward. But if you so desired it as a select board legally, you could move forward with virtually no approval from anyone at this point.
I think so.
Okay, I mean, that's... He's trying to make sure there is buying from the community is why he's taking this slow boat on this, right? Again, I respect him.
So again, I'd make the motion to find that the proposed village park project complies with the town plan. I make that finding.
Complies, we consider it an improvement. Right, I am...
Do you want to allow by that, it was considered an improvement rather than a development?
Sure.
Again, I don't know the rest of any difference whatsoever, but we can wordsmith it tomorrow.
But yeah, that's justification for, I guess.
Recreational improvement.
And there was a second, Matt made it. I'm sure I can get it, so that's... So we gotta make sure we have the word. Do we apply it so? Without the addition?
Taking the word, compliance, so.
Wait. I thought that's what you were looking for, is that this complies with the town plan.
Well, that's what his recommendation is, that it complies.
Yeah. And so that's the motion I'm putting forward. Is a finding that the proposed project, the village park, that's complied with the town plan.
And I wordsmithed it to sound a little bit smarter than I am, but the parking lot and lean-to is in compliance with the town plan, I'll add a couple of...
And that's the... I'd like you to the word parking area.
Parking area? Oh, you took, right.
But to me, parking lot makes me think of blacktop, and it's not blacktop.
Parking area, brother. And lean-to.
Right.
Which I'll note, I like that drawing, that's a cool one.
But I just understand that. Just from my own education, can I just understand why the parking that is currently being used in town isn't sufficient?
Because when I talk to Patrick Cooper, man, they're just parking the foot of the road there, and they have to walk up that bank. He says, "You don't know how many people pull up, they see that hill, and they don't walk up there."
But why can't they just walk across Townsend Road, right? You can still get in from behind where you're still...
You have my old house. It's still, it's still inclined, you can go past the...
Sure, but if you don't like an incline, you're not gonna be in the park anywhere.
Well, the whole park's like this, I mean, it's not a flat part of the park.
That's why I don't understand the problem. I'm not opposed, I wanna be really clear, I just wanna...
I think I see this as an improvement, making it more accessible.
Yeah, you do it friendly here, yeah.
The idea is, once you go to the parking area, there'd be a kiosk there with a nice map, you know, kind of carry-in, carry-out, you know, some little guidelines as to what to do.
Yeah, all that makes sense to me, I'm just trying to understand why that would just happen at the current parking across from the nature museum? How is it better if it's up there than down there? Again...
Because where I'm proposing to put the parking area is on the village park. Where when you are at the museum, you're at the museum, you're not at the village park.
But it does back onto the village park, right?
It does, the parking though.
Go across the, or go across the...
I live that way in the town.
And straight up this other hill. It's quite a incline from that perspective.
We had a little more discussion of this before.
Absolutely.
The reason we're saying no development is because that chunk of land was included in critical resource area.
Yes.
Correct.
Which, from my perspective retrospectively, was a mistake. And there's nothing about that land that makes it critical resource area. And by our saying that these improvements are in compliance with the town plan, do we by inference say that all other potential locations and other designated critical resource areas could fall from the same kind of improvements? Ideally, we would have a chance to change the town plan such that the village park was not designated critical resource land. I'm entirely in concert with the idea that it was not our intent to block improvements of the sort. But we voted and we have proposed a designation for that land that is just way overboard. By now voting to say it's in compliance with, and we also run the risk of saying that any other potentially legitimate critical resource land in town could be subject to the same kind of improvements or development. I just wanted to be clear that it's, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that we're saying it's in compliance with the town plan when we might not otherwise want to apply that same standard to some other particular piece of land in Grefton that really was legitimately critical resource.
Well, I think you can argue, because it's designated a park, that, you know, they're just trying to provide access to the park.
No, we have an argument over that.
Yeah, I hear you, I...
And that one's under municipal, under municipal control. You know, the four state parks, we're not gonna have the ability to approve development there anyways, are we?
And that was our, my, I don't see, our naive logic is, "Oh, we can't touch that stuff anyway, so we'll just throw it in that category."
I don't think it was that, I don't think...
And for me, and not everybody else.
I think we want to make sure they weren't developed into, you know, housing, for instance, that wild, open areas were protected, I think that's...
We didn't look up the definition of development as the other piece, absolutely.
Correct, we could've clarified that better.
So there's a motion on the floor, and we're still discussing it, that the parking area and lean-to is in compliance with the present town plan. Matt?
I just comment on Eric's, you don't wanna set precedence, but what would we have called it if it's not critical resource?
Yes.
This is our point, we don't have, we didn't have any other little category to throw in, so... It wound up there, remember?
We never had...
We couldn't round around on it.
Well...
Lot of time on that, boy, didn't we? Couldn't even call it village park?
But we had this.
It has to be something on the map.
That's something to look into, doesn't it have to be something?
Yeah.
Can't you just a black dot and say, you know, "These are the other, that we have no control over periods"? Because we...
There may be time in the future that people thank us for this, where they go, "Thank goodness they didn't let people build like a housing subdivision up there on that open land." You know, having grown up in New Jersey in a town where they protected a lot of the land and left it open, it makes that whole town a whole more livable place than a lot of other towns.
The example I've been going against, Al and I have talked about this, I have not heard any plans of it. But I'd love to see them build a remake of Daisy Turner's original house. Not the guest house, that's what they're working on now, and it's very cool.
A journey's end.
But you know what, critical resource land says, "Wait a minute, you're gonna build a house on a critical resource land? What are you thinking about?" You know, this would be a nice house to have, it'd be a good historic monument, good PR piece, etc., so...
My objective is not to blow up this, and I'm willing to go along with the consensus on this. But I really want to emphasize that we have to do something about changing those land use designations, and in particular, the critical resource.
Well, there's question number one for...
Thank you.
Right?
Yes.
Where would you put this? Ask them that question, where would you have put this?
We could have big questions, like pass out the maps, and then just say, "Here it is, what do you think of where we're at?"
But so as...
Sometimes that'll turn you into a half-hour...
So as not to delay this project, I move that we go ahead and...
Call the question.
Call the question, and let this proceed if we can.
All in favor of affirming in this statement that the parking area and lean-to is in compliance with the town plan as we designed it, what we envisioned it, that's not, I'm not gonna put that in there, I shouldn't have confused it, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we'll put that in the minutes, and then you can refer to the minutes as that piece.
Thank you.
Trail improvement too?
Trail improvement... Let's define improvement.
Maybe watch a little without the...
When we build, when we build a parking area, we're gonna have to build a short little section of trail to get to the existing trail, okay? And it's not gonna be very far.
It's there anyhow.
It's kinda. The trails that are there, I don't see until we get to, at some point, maybe a little Sherpack and that lower flat trail section to get people into the... But the trails that are there need some maintenance, and they need cutting some brush, they need cutting some agri trees.
But that's not construction.
That's all for maintenance. It's all part of maintenance.
Yeah, it's just maintenance, right?
Right. So it doesn't need to be on this.
Right. I don't think.
Put it down there if you want, but.
I don't think so, I think it would actually confuse the.
I, I looked at, I looked at that sort of stuff as like, that's not development, not.
Safety, yeah, yeah, yeah. Safe walking conditions, yeah.
Yep.
Perfect. It, it, it'd be a radical statement, but I'll ask, even if you guys wanted to build a real house on that property, that's still not an Act two fifty as long as you don't have over ten acres of development. Is that inaccurate?
I, I think that would be an accurate statement.
That, that's the way I interpret it is what we've learned.
She, they said, she said, because it's municipality, it's municipal land, the Act two fifty standard is different than for private land. And so the ruling we got back was, uh, are you affecting less than ten acres? And, and one of the questions that came up is, well, what, what's the trail? Well, the trail walks over more than ten acres, but it's only this wide. You know, when you calculate acreages, it takes a lot of that to make an acre.
The actual moving of earth to change something is.
Right. Right, but we're not constructing trail other than that little chunk, so.
So if you were to put the house in a septic, would the septic come into some jurisdiction?
Septic would, yeah.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, once you hit water, obviously.
We're not.
No, no.
I don't want to strip rules, man, it's not intended.
That statement.
No, so you can build a house.
Right. Similar to, uh, CCQ.
Right.
But what else? There's no, there's no water, no sewer.
If, my long-term wish would be that we could do a pavilion, you know, a roof with posts and a, and a flat surface for people to picnic and have a gathering, that sort of thing, long-term. But, but again, I don't see a septic, probably have to have a porta potty there, but I don't see, you know, roofless. Yeah, sorry.
And I chose a spot on my property to build one of those lean-tos already.
Did you like that design?
I really liked that design.
Did you share that?
I did, yes. I've never seen that design before.
Well, my son-in-law designed that after spending a lot of time in the Adirondacks.
Oh, I thought it was a commercial, you got off an internet.
My son-in-law designed that. And the, and they had three goals. In the Adirondack lean-to, you have water dripping out the front, you get smoke in there and there's not much sitting here. And so the three things we wanted, by putting the pitch up to the height and get rid of the smoke, get rid of the water dripping and have more seating areas.
With an obscure view of whatever you're looking at.
So, yeah, I think that'll be a nice for the kids in, you know, the school when they have their day out there.
No, but you know how mine comes out.
Yeah.
All right.
Dave, can I?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I want to go home. Um, I think in the discussion that the commissioners just had with Al, are the two issues that are most, uh, are inherent, are the two issues that are most important to cover at the forum. One is an explanation of that land use map and the definitions and how they were arrived at. And two, what is the process for your land coming under the jurisdiction of Act two fifty? And what, if any, implication does the town plan have on the ultimate decision about how you'll be able to use your土地? I think if we can get at those two issues, did I not say the second one very clearly? I see you.
No, I, I just, I just don't see where the, I just don't have a strike to see where the town plan is impinging on, on people's ability to, to use their.
Well, that goes vice versa.
But I think that's the question, Chris, I think that's the question, really I do.
I know that's a perception.
Yes, and because it is a real perception, not for this particular project, but John said it in his comment, right? It was his comment on the project, on the project request form.
Oh, that one, yes, that's John, I was thinking John Bennett.
No, this John. He, he said, read it.
Somewhere, we're gonna put this request form.
His request form said.
The town plan should be addressed?
The town plan should be addressed.
I'm paraphrasing, because they don't have it written, you're right. Bury it underneath one pile of.
Compliance with the town plan.
Needs to be addressed. Now, I don't think any of us are really clear on what that means. And I think to clarify that in this forum would be very helpful.
Well, we sent an email to him saying he's clarified and his response was, I probably shouldn't have said that.
But he shouldn't have said that under the circumstance of the municipality and the less than ten acres. Under what circumstance should he have said that?
I would ask Al, did he read the town plan or is he basing that comment on comments you made to him about your concerns with the town?
No, he's basing that comment on Article ten in the approval process.
I guess I, I would guess I really don't know if it was in response to my comment, you know, stuff I gave him to digest beforehand, but I think as soon as you file that with Wyndham Regional, they already have a copy of the new town plan, I think. Maybe they don't get it until after.
Well, Wyndham Regional, again, has nothing to do with the Act two fifty piece.
Oh, I think, I, I think Act two fifty gets their information, I think they share. But I, I may be wrong.
When a project comes up for Act two fifty review, project review committee, uh, gets a copy of it down there at WRC and we look at it for, and, and comment on it relative to how it impacts the regional plan and any of its provisions. That's the only way to connect. So Act two fifties get reviewed by WRC for compliance with WRC regional plan. And we make that, so.
Here's what it says. Act two fifty Vermont's land use regulation requires that applicants for certain types of development obtain a land use permit from, from the district environmental commission. We strongly encourage Act two fifty applicants to review the language in their local town plans and the regional plan prior to preparing an application. There is some link there between an Act two fifty application and the wording in the town plan. I don't think we understand what that is and I think there are numbers of our residents who don't understand what that is. And if we could clarify that at the forum, that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to argue the point one way or the other. I'm just saying, let's clarify that at the forum. Find someone who can come to the forum who can help us answer this question.
I realize I'm now in triple digits in this comment, but I will say it again. It is this board's intent to move as quickly as appropriate to fix the map. We have not taken a vote on it, but I'm willing to guess that there's unanimous consensus that this map needs to be fixed. The problem is, we can't just do it this month. There is a six-month process after we get to that point. And the decision we're at now, and we can change it, is we're gonna fix all the other problems. The map and town land use is only one minor thing and a lot of other issues that are in there. The example of twenty I can give you is the education chapter talks about a school district that we don't even have anymore. The facts have changed. The, the roadmap in transportation chapter has to change because our roads have changed. There's, it goes, and so I'm gonna shift gears, I said, I take the town plan. The next thing on the agenda is road and transportation. I am not gonna talk about that tonight because as my email said, I'm just swamping work this month and I have not had a chance to look at it. I ask for your opinion. I'm not good in committee work. You know, you look at each word and each dot, it takes forever. I would like your permission to attack this thing on my own and come to you in a timely fashion and say, I've made some radical changes on the education chapter and this is what I, it's a starting point. I'm not gonna ask for a yes, no vote, but at least we're not gonna wordsmith the first sentence, first paragraph of each paragraph.
Those painful.
It's very painful and, and again, I'm not a wordsmith, but I don't mind doing that in my own time, own space, kind of, with it, so. Um, my timeline does not change in that I would like to have, I want to be careful how I put this, a revised map to begin the process of approval, and again, there's a lot of steps in that. Sometime by early fall with the idea that we can then push it off to the select board sometime in the winter. Ideally, I'd like to tie things around town plan, town meeting. I can't see doing that just because of the logistics of it. I know that's a ways out, but you guys need about ninety days minimum by the time you get it in the review process. We have forty-five plus thirty, I think it is, with our hearings and, and all of that process. It just extends out, you know? And I can't see, I'd love to take a month off and go home and just fix all the town plans and come in April, let's vote on it and get her done. And it just, it's too much.
It is, it took years to get this far.
That's what I'm proposing. Any thoughts?
I have no objection.
That works for me.
I don't think anybody's gonna argue with your revising the education.
And it'll be on the agenda every month and I'll bring updates and my.
But it's gonna be a moving target.
Yeah, but the goal is by early summer at the latest, I hate saying early summer because I want to say spring, of next year, the town will vote on revised plan. That, that would be, and I will put it there bluntly with a camera running and no being taken. If you were to ask me, Dave, come up with a different map right now, I would, and Al and I would disagree on my first half, I would leave the resource in the productive role as it is. I would eliminate the critical resource land completely, including the definition, and then our town plans, definitions, and much of the map actually, would align with a regional map and our definitions would align. It does bring up issues like, what are you calling state land, all that stuff, but.
State land.
Yeah, and maybe that's the answer is just a, um, we gotta think, I mean, yeah, it's land that we do not have, oh, again, we'll be here till ten o'clock last week. Um, do we want power over that land or do we want? Again, Al, you know, this is not a decision you get to make here in this meeting. But do we want to write in there that, no, state land, we have no power? Or do you want to maintain some, state comes in and says, we've decided that the Eiffel Tower would look good up in Putnam?
I know.
You know?
It's scary.
Or do you want to have a little bit of control or none?
Well, um, the state, before they do anything, they have to write management plans for all their parcels and they're open to public, for public input. And so if they were gonna build the Eiffel Tower, they would have to propose it, they would have to have a meeting, just like they're doing at Low Lake, and, and present to the people what, what they hope to do.
But the town plan does have standing in, in, in those situations. And again, part of the thing is, I don't know if the consensus sure the town is.
I don't know.
And as I think about it, I'm thinking out loud, I'd love to put, there are village properties, creating a new designation, just calling it village properties and saying, you know, the town as a whole has control over this. And if the select board, I'm speaking as myself, not the chair, wants to change things, maybe you gotta ask the whole town about things like the lean-to. So anyways, that's where I'm at. I will repeat a hundred and second time, we all want to change the map. I, I, we've spent a lot of time arguing and rationalizing, should we? I, I think we need to move beyond that and saying, how do we get it done as fast as possible? And what things do we need to do in the meantime to make sure it's not causing the town problems? All right?
Great.
Anything else under unfinished business? The next regular meeting will be at the elementary school. It will be the panel discussion. I don't plan on having an agenda item beyond that, um, but we do have work to do and we have homework assignments and we'll go from there. All right? Any other comments or business? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move second.
We have a second, so move, we are adjourned, thank you, focus.